I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Very good. Welcome, everyone, to the special meeting here in May 29, 2024. The main part of this is a public hearing for the budget, but minutes of the May 15 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minute?
So we'll do second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, it is now, I'm gonna say 12:02. We're a little ahead of schedule. But we're got a public hearing on ordinance 2-2024 fiscal year 2025 budget presented for introduction. Tamika or Louis, are you gonna say anything or?
Tamika put it together, so I'll let her comment.
All right, Tamika, can you pull that mic a little closer to you? Are you ready or do you want me to take control here?
This is the first time.
So, well, listen, I guess I wanted to start out by saying that this is probably one of our most unusual budgets that I've been a part of since my latter 10 years. Normally, I like to give a little presentation, a little pie chart showing where everything is going. And my hope is we'll have that prior to the acceptance of the budget, which would be on June the 5th. So I'll give up.
It's got 1800 too.
At 6 o'clock.
Yes.
6 o'clock. 1800 got me a little bit, but. 6 o'clock PM on the first Wednesday of June. And we'll do a little presentation like I've done in the years past. And we'll show everyone how we're collecting our revenues, how we're expending our expenditures. And I want to just stress to everyone, this budget is fairly, the main things in the budget, you know, we gain all of our information from the state that tells us how much real property tax we're gonna collect. And then we put in some numbers from previous years on what we're gonna collect from personal property, traders' taxes, railroad utility fees and so forth. And as we go down, you'll see that the bottom line is we're looking at having a general fund revenue of about $19,712,562. Now, we're using in that, there's some ARPA standard allowance money that we're gonna use to balance the budget. Good, bad, or indifferent, that's what we're gonna do this year again. And then we get into our expenditure side. I think a couple of the key things that are probably the most important to the employees of the town in this budget is a 3% merit increase for those, all those who've got the favorable reviews. And there's a 6% cost of living increase that's included into this budget, as well as whatever our commitments to the FOP were on the policing side are do noted on here also. The, breeze on through here. From the folks from the Elton Alliance, there's $100,000 for the Main Street program is also included in here. Is there anything I'm missing that's sticking out like, that I should be mentioning at this point? Okay. The, everything is pretty much mirrors last year's budget, which was, I was gonna say fiscal year 24 budget. It mirrors it other than the salaries and the increases. Is there any question from the board? Was there any new positions? Let's see, let me look at that. We go back to the new positions.
I would like to mention one thing. For 25, you see a million, 594.72 for the buildings. And the reason that's so high this year is because we signed a contract for 1.2 million to put a new roof in, nine major C units on the building. And Kipson charged with that project, and he's already got everything lined up. As soon as the contractor gets all the equipment and everything, we'll coordinate the beginning of that work. A new roof and those units will be a rather large and expensive project, but it needs to be done. Correct?
Correct, exactly.
And the.
That's so high, I'm sorry.
There is only one other change that I'd like to make when it comes to the revenue side. I wanted to put a separate line item. I was, it was kind of a request from the Public Works, some of the guys down there wanted a line item in there when they sell scrap, when we do the scrap selling. Quite frankly, I'd like to know what that number is each and every year. So we'll put a projected number in there. Tamika, maybe $5,000 in scrap sales? And then we'll have an actual as we're going, but that's a line item I'd like to kind of keep track of. All right? Is there, once again, I apologize that this is probably the plainest, Janus budget that we've had in 10 years, but we're working through a couple different things. Not only our new finance director, but we're also working on trying to get the final information on the audit from fiscal year 23, which we still have, I still have some questions with. And trying to put this thing together, it's, we're doing the best we can. If we have to do multiple budget amendments throughout the course of the year, I'm okay with that as we go. Any questions or comments on that?
On the revenue?
On the revenue side? Okay.
Well, we always have the laxity also to make the budget amendment. I think, you know, it's been very busy. And we, as a board, never sat down and looked and discussed at will. But as you were saying, it's gonna be synonymous of last year, not a whole lot of frills or what have you. So we still have that opportunity.
We do. And I think when mentioning the expenditure side, when you look at the, probably our largest cost increase has been public safety with the police department. I remember just a handful of years ago, our police department was about a $6 million line item budget. And now we're over $9 million in public safety. And we are at, I would say, 48 officers now, right?
That's correct.
And at one time, just a handful of years ago, I remember we were in the low 30s, right? So it was in the low 30s. So we finally got it up to where we should have been probably all these years. And I think we're well braced for the future. Another thing I know that Public Works Department is currently looking at putting some of the grass cutting out on bid, which is, could change some of the things into the budget also. None of that was included in your.
Correct.
That's correct. So I think that there'll be some changes. I believe actually some call saving benefits there that we'll see on the Public Works side. Everything else that you'll see is pretty mirrored on the expenditure side as it was in the past. And once again, next week we'll have it where I can show you on the, on the screen.
From the public, from your point of view, as a public should be aware, there's no increased real property tax to this fiscal year either.
Thank you, Lou. So as Lou stated, we're not increasing the tax rate for fiscal year 25, which I know our residents of the town really appreciate that. And it's looking at some of our advice that may be for a short term, who knows? But I would tell you that my goal is always, if you grow then, and you grow the correct way, then you don't have to really raise the rates. But if you're not having a lot of good growth, then you have to raise the rates. And that's just, just the way, the way of the land per se. And I always like to say that we just went through one of the ugliest county elections that I've ever seen in my tenure as, as probably a citizen of the town of Elton. And it was all fighting over dollars it was going to the school board. And I like to use that as an example when you look at our budgets over the years. You know, you have cost of living, you have COLAs, merit increases, cost of insurance went up a little bit, 9%, I think, I don't, I think was the number, 9%. Gas prices, fuel costs, oil changes, everything is going up. So if you just take that it's a 10% number across the board, and if you're at 18 million, you're gonna be another 1.8 million dollars the following year. So you're at 19.8. Next year, our budget could be as, as high as a $20 million revenue side or expenditure side that we have to come up with that type of revenue. And it is a challenge. And whereas getting back for the, we're dealing with a lot smaller numbers than what the county was dealing with, just the school board themselves was, let's say, 220 million dollars. So if they had the same 10% cost that we had, that's 22 million dollars, 25 million dollars. It's a lot of dollars that they had to, had to come up with, and that's what some of the argument was over. But I recognize that. Tamika, am I missing anything? Want to add anything? Tell us where we're at? Anything? Nothing?
I think you touched on the key points, the pretty much mirrors last year. The police have their, you know, the higher expenditure, expense line in the budget, or expenditure, the highest expenditures in the budget. The only increases really were salaries for that merit. Oh, we worked the million dollars for the building.
Here for the roofing.
For the roofing, yes. What else? The ARPA was to balance the budget. That's pretty much it. There wasn't really any major, anything else major.
Very good.
I think that Carolyn and her team should be commended for being able to recruit and build all the vacancies we've had at the police department, because vacancies were so long. And the people depend on the police department for a ray of service. And we're up to full strength now.
48, we're just too shy.
Oh, you're still too shy?
Too shy.
Okay, we're getting close anyway. I thought we were at.
But overall, the budget has been good through the years financially. The police department just couldn't catch people. The money was always there. Fortunately, we had a time when the money's available and the offices are available. So we know we reach a good time right now.
It has been. So let's go on to the water fund if we could. Any questions on the general fund? Okay, and then I'll open up, open it up to the floor since it is a public hearing here shortly. The water fund, the water fund, as you'll see through there, the, I guess the big things is, is that the, we increased the water rate, which all these numbers are affected by the increase of the water rate. And that water rate isn't something additional now. This is what we did in January, but it's, it was postponed through April. So I think the folks are now getting their new water bills with the increase. Is that correct? I'm looking for some assistance. Yes. So your water bill now is currently being affected by something that we did late last year. And we, we pushed it off a little bit to help the residents the best we could during these times with the inflationary times. So you'll see our water revenue is gonna increase, which is gonna allow us to build a little bit of reserve in the water fund, as well as the, going into the sewer fund revenue is the same way. We increase that slightly, and you'll see the effects of that in the sewer fund. So I wanted just to stress for anyone that might watch this video afterwards, the water and sewer funds are funds that, in our reserve, we'll notice, we try to keep maybe anywhere from 90 to maybe 150 days of reserve in those accounts. And the, there are accounts that, it's, it's really not a money-making account for the municipality. So folks out there that believe that we're doing this to increase, to make money for the town of Elton, that's not the truth of it. The, the truth is, is that we do it, this is what it costs us to operate our water plant and our sewer plant, and we just pass that on. If it was a private entity that owned the municipal waterside and the sewer side, I can promise you our rates would be probably twice of what they are today. And even though our rates, some of our residents appear, say sometimes that the rates are high, I can tell you go anywhere else in the county and, or anywhere else in the state, and we're probably considered to be too low across the gamut. But I think we do a good job on our water and sewer. And then lastly, you'll see that we have a, our major facility fund. I know that we're working on our capital improvement plan. That's, we're doing the best we can juggling all these different things. But our major facility fund revenue, we're projecting that we're gonna collect about $466,000 this year. But if you look at the, if you look at the projections that I think Tamika sent to us yesterday, there's about $27 million in projections of major facility fund.
I spoke to G, and the correction is it's around 12.
12, okay.
Because some of them were pushed into the future.
Okay, very good. So there's about $12 million in major facility fund money that we will be collecting over the next year, year and a half. But I wanted to state to you that when you look at the major facility fund expense, we're only expensing that we're gonna do $466,000 worth of expense in 2025. So if that's part of the capital improvement plan as it sits now, we're only spending 466,000. So is there any questions from the board on general fund, water, or sewer? This is a public hearing. Does anyone out in the audience have any questions in regards to our fiscal year 25 budget? I'm gonna turn it over to the, anyone on the Zoom meeting have any questions about our fiscal year budget?
No one has unmuted themselves.
Nobody is unmuted. So it is now 12:17. This public hearing is closed for the fiscal year 25 budget. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance?
Where'd it go? 2-2024. We're ended up in purposes.
As Louis stated. We have a motion. And a second. Any discussion on the fiscal 2025 budget?
Um, we're not gonna do individual meetings with the department heads this year, correct?
No, what you have in their, in their, it was a pretty bare bones budget.
Yeah.
And if there's any specific questions you want to ask any of the department heads, please, go ahead.
Now?
Now, you can do it now?
I just, Mary, just real quick on your budget. Do you have a revenue in here?
There is here on this front page of this. Jean, I saw it here.
Not hers, right? Something else?
No, it was here. I saw it on the general, general fund revenue.
Oh, I'm looking at the individual budget.
It was 100 and.
90?
190, 190 or 180? I'm looking for it here now. I should find it. It was recreational programs.
I did not.
190,000.
100,000?
190.
190,000?
190 on recreation service charges.
That helps. All your expenditures, but I didn't see the revenue. Do you have it broken down?
Well, I thought I did. I don't see it in here, but I can, probably, I hardly didn't print that page.
I'm just, I'm just curious where it's coming from, you know, for different programs or whatever that we have going. That's all. Okay, real simple. Thank you.
Any other?
Nope.
Charles? Earl? Rob? Very good. And once again, this was a motion for introduction. I want to commit that I'll have a little bit better presentation for everyone for the final. And all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. I can't find mine again. Oh, there it is. Right there in front of me. All right. Lou, you have anything to report?
Oh, yeah. I was down to the well force site this morning to check. And the South Fields contractor, SEH, is actually installing water line there. The water line will go from that, from the wellhouse and the power site north towards where the pole of water will be. Of course, that ties into the, the infrastructure that'll be placed up there. They were putting that in. That was a good sign because it's been some time before they started doing that work there on site. And I imagine Utility Foreman, Royce Fallon, has a lot of experience. And he worked at the Commerce Center Drive. And you know, that's a really nice site. They did a really good job there, the contractor. So South Fields has a really good organization they're working for. So anyway, that's a good sign. I've been watching that, waiting for them to do that connection.
It's huge. Anything else?
Something along with the South Fields.
All right. Anything else, Lou? Okay, I wanted to report that I thought the Memorial Day Parade was wonderful. We made it right under the rain. But listen, I applaud everyone that was involved. It was a great job. A lot of, a lot of viewers out there, a lot of participants. I think it was a great job. The, I, I wanted to also, and I failed to mention, happy birthday to Commissioner Gibbons on Memorial Day, but we've done it about 10 times since. We have about 20 more to go.
I'll tell you, I get six more days a year.
All right, six a year. All right. So very good on that. We had, I wanted to thank the Elton Police Department for having me at their, their annual awards. I loved how it went this year. Whereas I actually thought it was really, it was, not to say that it was fast or quick, but I, I think it was well organized and it went, went through it pretty quickly. So congratulations to you and your whole team and, and the promoted officers. Great job. I have two locations on Locust Lane. Dan, maybe you could take a look at. If, if you're heading off of Main Street, if you're coming from Delaware and you make a right onto Locust Lane, and you're coming up to the stop sign at the intersection of High Street and Locust, you cannot see that stop sign. I was always wondering why everyone is going through that stop sign there. You can't see it until you're right up on it. The trees from the houses a couple doors up block that. So if for any second you look away, you can't see that stop sign. So that's one. So once you make it to that stop sign, and now you make it right past Hermitage Drive to my favorite bush in the world, that bush needs to be trimmed again. You cannot see the children at play sign at all today.
You're talking Locust and Hermitage?
Locust and Hermitage, yes.
That went last year, didn't it?
Oh, we trimmed it last year or the year before.
Last year.
Last year. Well, it's, it's overgrown again. And, and I would like to ask that we remove that one vine this year that's always on the stop sign. It wasn't removed last year. I was waiting for us to pull that one vine down, but we'll get it this year. But there's also a, a yellow, I think it's a children playing sign. It's kind of hidden in there now, too. Maybe we can take care of that. That's all I have. Rob?
Well, seeing as I'm married, it's you first, I just have to repeat that I thought the Memorial Day Parade was great. We were blessed that the rain held off until the very last moment. And then when he sprinkled on us, but it went well. Attendance was great in spite of the threat of the weather. And the police awards ceremony, one of my favorite events of the year. I wish that the citizens of the town could hear some of these stories. They may have a deeper appreciation for what our guys and gals go through. The only other thing I wanted to bring up was at the behest of a few citizens who have been mentioning the problems with parking downtown. And they all seem to agree that we should bring more attention to the parking lots out back along Howard Street, because we have a lot of parking that people don't seem to be aware of. So I think that I'd like to have somebody look into that. Some signage, some way of directing people out back.
Can I give the Elton Alliance a task?
What do you, what would you like?
The task to tell us where we need to, what type of signage we would need to direct people to those parking lots.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
And I have to tell you, you did a wonderful job as MC for the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of hurrying along. I didn't slip any jokes or anything. No, you did good. So you guys were a bike. Yes.
Earl?
I was gonna say that, but since you said it, I ain't saying it a second time. But anyway, good afternoon, everyone. I had a couple of things I wanted to bring to the table just for the citizens and the police department. Cautions for the bikers at night. There's a lot of bikers riding at night and no lights. I'm seeing.
Bicyclists?
And they're starting to ride down the yellow line. I have no clue when this started because I figured they figured it's safe riding down the yellow line. But if you see them, I'm not sure. I don't want to say anything to them, but maybe please, if you see them, I just wanted to caution that. But also thank you to Dan and his, the Public Works crew for the Memorial Parade, all their assistance. Police Department, Elton Alliance, don't want to forget them, and Rob. They've done a good job of this year. And even Ann Henley's sign helped out with something that I thought should have been years ago with the music on the flow. It really helped out a little difference. There's one thing I brought up maybe about four years ago, the yield sign on Delaware Avenue and Route 40. I'm not an engineer or nothing like that, but I have common sense. When the yield sign is sitting here in the middle of that curve, it's facing for either one for us to yield or not yield. Some people are thinking they're coming off the Route 40, that yield sign, not for them, but it is. The red light dictates that yield sign is supposed to be a straight, if I'm not mistaken, a straight shot for that traffic to keep flowing. I wrote my brother, and he said he's never noticed that sign, and that brought it up again. I think the state needs to look at that because that yield sign should be backed a little bit further on that turn or that curve where it identified to those drivers, not the ones that's coming through. That's just my point of view. I don't know whether I'm right or wrong, but if I am.
I know what you're saying, and you're correct.
Yeah.
It's the worst location of a yield sign ever.
Yep. So could someone look into that?
I sent a, I think, a district engineer.
Yeah.
About.
I agree, it needs to be backed for, so it's less confusing.
Or either turn it a little.
When he come off Route 40, it should be right there.
Yeah. So anyway, that was one thing. And the Parks and Rec Department, I said last meeting, running strong. Mary, you guys are doing a great job out there in the Parks and Rec Department. The programs, the summer programs are up and going. And I just want to commend you guys for a good job. And the last thing, you want to look in, I don't think you put this in the budget. Remember, we talked about trying to get a PA system in from the auditorium in case there's emergency or something, you want to be able to make that announcement to people outside of the yard. I don't think we put that in the budget, but I talked about bringing that up again. All right, so just a concern.
And if you can have a number by next meeting? Gotta have a number by next meeting?
Oh, that's fine. Okay, thank you. That's it?
Thank you. Charles?
I just already mentioned that the Elton had the Memorial Day Parade. And I thought that all the comments were the same, so I echo the same thought. The police department, again, you had another wonderful ceremony. again, we had another wonderful ceremony. And we discussed the fact that we've always had money to fund the police department, but we never get the numbers. But not only do we have the money and the numbers now being where they are, but, you know, the police, they do a very nice job. And I think Rob Maschiano mentioned the fact that the public, I don't think really realize that. You know, a lot of the stories that you mentioned and the anecdotes and things out there were very good to hear. And I remember sitting on this board, and I think others, we used to be the ridicule of the community because our police department actually caught help from people who were saying they weren't doing that, they weren't doing that. I think it's a different story now. And of course, there was leadership before, but thank you for your leadership presently and how you impacted the community in your position as well. Elton High School has its graduation I D on Friday. We have two students, and the budget reflects that. We always put a thousand dollars in scholarships. So, there were two, two five hundred scholarships presented on last Wednesday. Our recipients will be here, Michelle, I D that. The next meeting will be one.
And then the following workshop.
And then, right. And we thank Elton High School because we tell them that we have scholarship offerings to give out in a number of twos, and they supply us with the recipient. And one boy I met, one that was honored to give to him, and he was number two in a class, I think, over two hundred. So, you know, I had to look at his looks in it because all you saw was A's on his report going through grades nine to twelve, and that's magnificent for that to even happen. And both of the students actually were from Elton. The scholarships were given to somebody that lived in Elton proper, so we're grateful for that as well. So, that's it.
Thank you. Jean?
Charlie, you actually reminded me of something I did have during the budget I wanted to bring up was the scholarships. I noticed that, you know, it's a thousand dollars for two people, right? Two recipients.
Two recipients, yes.
But it's only five hundred dollars each.
Right.
And I was thinking that in this day and age that we should possibly double that to a thousand dollars apiece. I don't think, we started out five hundred many, many years ago and have not increased that amount. So, I would, I would like to at least, should I make a motion?
Yeah.
You will. I would like to make a motion for this coming year for each scholarship recipient to receive a thousand dollars.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on?
Great idea, Jean.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, change that from five hundred to a thousand, actually be two thousand to two thousand.
Yeah. That was on my notes earlier, and I forgot to bring that up. Rob, the police award ceremony, one of my favorites. So, I was terribly disappointed that I could not be there, and I just wanted to give my apologies. It was something that I always looked forward to. I really enjoyed it. It gives me stories that I could pass along to other people about how good our, you know, men and women are doing over there. And the Alliance, thank you for all your help with the parade. And my apologies again. It was a rough week. That's all I can tell you. So, I'll wait. Everything went well for everybody. That's all.
Thank you. This is the time we opened the floor. If anyone has anything to say for the good of the town of Elton. Is there anyone? Please, praise, come on down. Alicia? Alicia, come on down.
Alicia Calhoun with the Elton Alliance. I also wanted to express my thank you for all of you being at the parade. That was wonderful to have. You didn't have a choice. But thank you guys for being on the foot. We really appreciate the support that you give for that parade. A couple of things. One, we have an event coming up next Friday. It's our Jump into June. It's our kickoff to summer for all the children and families to come out for family activities. And then on the 21st, we have our Dog's Day of Summer, which of course is focused on our four-legged friends, on everyone in the community to bring their dogs out for vendor-specific activities related to cats. But in all the conversations around the signs, I don't know, I believe this has been talked about, I'm not sure, but the stop sign at Main and North Street in front of Rob's building, it's so far back, nobody stops there. And I, you guys could make a mint if somebody sat there.
It's not that they don't see it. They just dig.
Okay, well, my point is that I feel like if it was up closer in front of Spork where really the crossways is, maybe they'd pay attention. But the other challenge is the one on the other side is behind the fence at Minnehans, and that is kind of hidden. And so, you have one on each side. They're not in line with each other, and I don't know if there's a way to explore what would make more sense and to give more people the chance to see it. I'm not sure.
The only thing I can think of, and I've mentioned this in the past, is that we put flashing lights around them or at least reflectors. I'm telling you, a lot of people see them. Just don't care.
They, I mean, I, we see it all day long. They're just looking through that stop sign.
But I would go to slow it down or cut down on the amount of people that do that. Maybe some people aren't seeing it. That's a distinct possibility. And I think that reflectors and flashing lights would certainly help. And maybe relocation.
Yeah, a relocation may, I don't know who can look into that from an engineering standpoint is what would make sense. But I think exploring what could help would be a good idea because the amount of people that do stop versus don't stop, you see it, is crazy.
I've seen speed up here through the intersection.
So, and only brought, came to my attention because of all the other comments we've had about the signs around town.
Lou, can you see one of those flashing stop signs? I thought we were looking at that.
I don't know if you can use those on a public street, stick them in parking lots and things like that, but we have to know by the manual uniform traffic control devices by law.
It's a state highway, so.
I don't know. I had to, I've looked. I don't know.
That's kind of where I was talking.
I already looked in the Uniform Traffic Design Manual. I looked into it to see if you could do anything like that legally. And while you can't do it specifically under the terms of that manual, I also talked to a couple of other people to see what we can do to draw a lot more attention to that sign when you're down closer to both streets.
Right.
And as you're driving up, you'll see, you'll see a visual there which we're working on.
Okay, we put the largest sign up, largest stop sign that's available, increase it. And I go through there. I can see it every day and outside. I don't know.
I think we all see it. They just, I don't know.
People just don't want to stop.
No, it's the same at North and High.
Maybe we could do a one-person stop, standing out there.
That's a good problem.
There we go. Listen, all it's going to take is enforcement for a couple of days and then.
I think that's all we take. I think you'd see it.
Chief's got it.
Yeah, okay. And then last thing before I sit down is we have a brand new staff member. Ashley Golden is our new executive administrator with the Elton Alliance. You will see her around, and she's been amazing for a while.
It's wonderful to be here and to see you. Thank you, Alicia, for introducing me. It's been a wonderful five weeks so far, and I'm just so much looking forward to continuing.
Fantastic.
While you're saying that, what has the Alliance done as far as the farmer market goes? If you all operated, what are your intentions? I know some towns or municipalities are operational now. Ours is not. We always have one or two vendors. Have you come up with any ideas how you might like to see a change in that revenue?
Yeah, I, Ashley, a couple of different things. Michelle, I don't know, I know you're the point person here for applications. I don't know if you've seen anything or heard anything. I've heard through the grapevine that Matt got a different role, and he will not be coming back. I don't know if you've heard confirmation on that or not. You know, I'm not the normal point of contact for that, but I've done a lot of outreach, as you guys know, based on other conversations. The other thing that I've had discussions with A U I about is the possibility to get electric down there. So, potentially having food trucks down there, depending on, you know, what our vendor situation could look like. The other thing that I've been involved in is conversations with the county, and we want to have a broader conversation around farmers markets as a whole in the county because we're all very close towns. And so, if we're pulling vendors, produce, perishables, whatever that looks like, other towns are potentially pulling the same ones. And how do you get to a point where you're not saturating the amount of farmers, the amount of vendors that we have in the county as a whole? So, I'm having conversations with the economic development team on what that could look like and how we can best utilize each of the towns that want to have something like that. Long term, if something doesn't work out, that we're not successful with that, with the permission of the board here, I would like to explore us having more events down there, targeted for down there, especially if we can get some lighting and things. I'm looking at great opportunities to get some safety lighting, you know, to have some, something similar to what we have on Main Street, a cross Main Street, to bring some aesthetics to that area as well. We know it's a flooding issue, so we're also very aware of from an electric standpoint, working with A U I on how we could counteract that, but definitely looking at great opportunities for those things.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing up the stop sign. I know that's a problem, but I just think personally, I just think driving, there's a total disregard for it in America. I mean, I've been passed on North Street. I've been passed on High Street just running 25 miles per hour because whoever's driving behind me, I wasn't moving fast enough. But even now, even when you go to 95, there's a total disregard. I guess you be rather in your mind, you know, how do I drive? The right lane used to be the slow lane and the fast lane, but now if you even drive 95, it's just different. But maybe that's part of America. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Anyone on the Zoom meeting have anything to say for the good of the town? Hearing none. I'd like to ask the board, we're going to have a closed meeting, to meet with our financial advisors and get some advice, financial advice. Do we have a motion to hold a closed meeting in regards to, I guess it would be?
Advice from council?
Advice from council. There we go.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And we will not re-convince. Thank you.